Madam Clerk, can we please pull up the one with the track changes? So, let me preface for everyone first that there was a little bit of administrative glitch. And we thought this went to the... Our general counsel worked very hard Friday night, got the changes in, thought our clerk was copied on it. She wasn't copied on it, so it didn't get posted. So, you're looking at it now. So, I'm going to see if I can walk you through it, make it simple, and maybe less daunting. So, just to refresh everybody's memory about the naming rights policy that we embarked on about 15 months ago as part of the Governance Committee. At one... When we first began the work, we thought we would just have a new corporate sponsorships policy to include naming rights. Then, through the work of Governance, we realized that it would then have a spillover cascading effect to what the schools already do at the school-based level for sponsorships. And we thought, "Let's just make this simpler and make the changes inside of an existing policy." So, that's what you're seeing in front of you. Second thing is if you look at Section 1, the blue writing that has been struck out. This was when we first began the work again 15 minutes... 15 months ago, where we thought this might involve either existing policies or things to do with our boosters and teacher associations. But as the Governance Committee walked through this, what we know and understand is naming rights are solely the purview of the school board. So, that's why we struck out that first language in Section 1. Section 2, of course, is just going to be a summary of changes, and that'll be done after we finally vote on this thing. Section 3, if you remember, we were talking about doing a revenue share. This happens to be another version where we thought about a sinking fund, and I'll explain that in Section 5. But in any case, we struck the language because in Section 3, it's really not relevant about what we're doing with the money anyway. It's just the responsibility of the Board when we take on this issue of a naming right. Section 4, Guidelines for New School Facilities. We wanted that just titled so people understood that section is only when you're talking about a new school. I would like to find out just why there's a big gap between...
Yeah, that's...
We can clean that up.
We can easily clean that up, right?
Okay, that's cool. Because I didn't... You know, at one point, I thought we were done in looking at one version online. So, page 2, if you scroll down, and you'll start to see some writing in red. This is... Some of it was just John Foster legal language, cleaning it up in places. And you'll notice at the very bottom of Section 4, it says, "The school board may also consider change in the name of a school or facility where some other compelling need exists." If we remember, that was a change we made a while back. Section 5 is the heart of the matter. I'm going to draw your attention to. Again, red language is the legal language that John was trying to, you know, basically give that legal protection of if we're going to enter into a contract with an entity that we've protected ourselves in saying, "Hey, you don't get any profits that you can delineate off of this agreement. That's not our responsibility." And we... That any names we take into consideration would certainly be protecting the reputation of the school. So, the very first line in Section 5 where it says, "The sale of naming rights." This is what we hammered out on Thursday as trying to find two significant areas where we could find the best balance. And I'm going to give you an example after I read the language. So, "Revenue from a naming rights contract will be allocated to a facilities fund for the maintenance and enhancement of school facilities. Disbursement of these funds will be approved by the school board." What that means when we looked at some... One other school division in particular was Broward County in Florida, that when they would enter into a naming rights, they put it into a fund. And what I thought was important is that this is a fund that, in the end, we're trying to help our schools with a lot of unmet needs. McLean High School has unmet need. Some of our other high schools have unmet need. And a lot of it has to do with stadium facility maintenance, but it can be other things. So, just digest that statement there. And then, I want to skip down to the second portion that we added in. And it's going to go down. Keep going. Okay, there we go. So, what you will see in that blue section, "The school board authorizes the division to oversee the terms and conditions of all contracts associated with the naming rights and to decide the monetary value. All contracts will be reviewed by the Office of Procurement Services and Division Counsel. School board shall approve all naming rights contracts." What these two sections that we talked about in Governance essentially allow us to do is that on a case-by-case basis, when the school... The school board is presented with a corporate contract where they're wanting to enter into a naming rights opportunity, which is essentially advertising, that the money goes into this fund. The school board then decides how to disperse this. I'm going to just go ahead and give an example like McLean. McLean High School was presented with this opportunity for a naming rights of their stadium field. But the contract was always going to be between FCPS and the company that's interested in buying those naming rights. That was always the case. Question was, the money would come into FCPS, and then would the contract say it'll... It's to be paid out back to McLean so that they, in this case, could purchase scoreboards that they very much need.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
So, you say it was always going to, except the way that it was presented was that somehow there was going to be the leverage of the fact that there was going to be a deal taken by booster clubs to a bank as collateral. And I mean, this... So, I never quite understood how it was always going to be FCPS.
Well, so, a booster organization can't sell off our naming rights. So...
Okay, well, I'm... Could you... I'm sorry, could you say that again?
A booster club cannot sell off the naming rights.
Okay, I'm glad we got that straight. So... So...
But they can bring us an opportunity. And the school... The school board with this language here, along with the Division Superintendent, can review the contract and decide if they like the terms of the contract, and then money would go into a facilities fund. If the contract is to say, "We would like to designate the funds that we bring to this naming rights to meet the needs of said school that were interested in having the facility bear our name, we would like that to be earmarked."
Okay, what I don't understand with what you just said, I don't understand the first paragraph in blue here.
Okay.
That the terms and conditions of all the contracts will be... With naming rights, be decided basically by the division. I'm assuming by "the" division, you mean "the" superintendent.
Yes.
Okay, so, that what that says is we yield any right to participate in any discussion on the terms and conditions and the monetary value. And that everything else is yielded over. And so, it... So, by the language here, it sounds like it's a perfunctory role of the Board to just... I mean, on what... On what basis are we approving it? I mean, that it's just coming to us so we're notified? I mean...
No, I mean, what it says here is that revenue from the naming rights contract will need to go to this facilities fund. And then, the second sentence says... It says that the facilities fund is meant to provide maintenance and enhancement of school facilities. Second sentence delineates, "Disbursement of these funds will be approved by the school board."
No, I'm talking about on the...
I know.
Right here, right here, this says...
Yeah, that's at the end.
The first sentence says that the school board authorized the division to oversee the terms and conditions of all contracts associated with naming rights and to decide the monetary value. So, you're saying that the school board is yielding the authority... The authority of anything having to do with the terms and conditions and anything having to do with the monetary value of the contracts, meaning the price.
If I may, I think when we were having this conversation, Kevin Snead was there and offered the idea that it's a little bit like the proffers, right? We currently have someone who works, does the negotiation. I don't think you're going to have 12 people sitting in a negotiation, but that there will be someone. And the main point being that it won't be at the school level, that it will be at the central level, that there's not that person, right?
Okay, I agree. I agree. I agree with that. But what this... My question is, is I feel like there's something in between. And to me, I guess I don't understand why this isn't a cafeteria menu. To me, a scoreboard is a scoreboard. And I don't think if we're going to do this, if a score... If we decide as a division, we're going to sell naming rights, and a scoreboard is, you know, a quadrillion dollars, and that's for five years, that the quadrillion dollars is a quadrillion dollars. And once those naming rights are gone, if somebody else is interested in buying naming rights on a scoreboard, well, here's the schools that are left. It's a quadrillion dollars.
My understanding is that's at the regulation level to be decided, and this is the policy level, but...
But we're already deciding at the policy level to give up. So, there's never... There's never an approval by the Board of what any terms and conditions are going to be or what the mechanism of the monetary value that's associated with it. We're just going to yield it all?
No, I mean, that...
Yeah, I recall that there was language in here. Maybe Mr. Foster can help figure out where this was. But it was my understanding, we still retain the right to a final approval of all contracts. So, there... The key word there is oversee. So, when we do a roofing contract, the Board directs the Superintendent to oversee the terms and conditions of a roofing contract. We don't sit there and micromanage the terms and conditions. But the final approval of the contract, it must come through the Board. And we do them most of the time on our consent agenda. But we also said on any consent agenda item, you could pull it off. So, in the case of a naming rights contract, even if people placed it on the consent agenda first, you pull it up, and it ends up being an action item.
Okay, and then...
But Ms. Schultz, let me just... Let me just say this. All we did was we're bringing draft language that three out of the four Governance Committee members recommended for your consideration. In the end, today is where the full Board's going to own this. And if you guys want to improve upon the work of the Governance Committee, I welcome it because as you guys know, when any time you work on something really closely, you start to get blurry-eyed. So, I would...
Well, I'm going to work on... I'm going to definitely work on the first sentence. The last sentence, I can tell you right off the bat, is problematic for me grammar-wise because it says that we shall approve them all. And that's not... We may not approve them all. We mightn't. We mightn't approve them all. So, to me, it should say that any naming rights contract shall be approved by the Board. That's completely different than what that says. I mean, if you understand what I'm saying.
I...
The words there, you understand what I'm saying.
I welcome... Do you understand? We were trying to seriously just get to the heart and soul of where we thought we could get consensus.
The... If I may, Chair, I don't know if you had a chance to finish. And I know we had a clarifying question that's now become discussion for the three of us. If we want to take some... If you want to add any final thoughts before we take comments from the Board and have the specific conversations?
I'm sorry, are you saying I shouldn't speak?
No, 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 no. I think Dahlia's right.
Well, I think...
We all have comments. I don't know. I know Ms. McLaughlin was speaking, and there are others who also would like to be in line.
I think that she recognized me, and I appropriately spoke.
That's okay. So, at this point, what I'd simply wanted to just, A, lay out was the key pieces through all this red and blue, what to focus on. I recommend looking at the blue. The red is more legalese. And the heart of what we wrestled with as a Governance Committee is what's in those three blue sections that I just walked you through. And then, in terms of just, again, the intent of this, to give you an example is, you could take the McLean contract. The contract itself, if we're explaining to a corporate entity, "Look, you want to buy a naming right? We have a facilities fund. If you would like to indicate in your contract that you would like to designate it to a certain school because of need, that then can be presented as part of the contract." Then, the Board, which has final approval, can look at that language and say, you know, we... That's fine, that's as prescriptive as it is. We want to target all that money to go to school A. Or we can say, "We recognize that school A has some facility needs, so the Board has the final determination of the disbursement of funds." So, we could end up saying, "If school A needs scoreboards, they need three of them, and we look at what we have around the school system, and this is how much those scoreboards cost, then this is what we can designate that the funds coming out of the facilities would go to that school." So, at this point, before I take other Board member input, in fairness to my two Governance colleagues who are here, I would like to see if there's anything they would like to add first. And I will just say, when you work this closely to it, I'm trying to break it down that might make sense, but maybe there's still more that I didn't capture.
I think you captured it pretty well. You know, for many, many months, the Governance Committee wrestled with the allocation of the funds, and this came up as a sort of last-minute enlightenment that maybe it should be case-by-case. And depending upon where the money's coming from, which school needs might be different, and the Board might want to have a different say. So, that is why we decided to put it that way. Any and all contracts, you know, there will be... You know, we don't... Board doesn't want to sit as a collective body and negotiate all the terms. We're going to give that to Superintendent to do his or her best job to bring a proposal to the school board. School board can always reject or ask for something else, can amend and send it back out. That will be up to the Board. So, that's where school board input will come in a public meeting. A public meeting. Or sometimes, you know, for the negotiation purposes, we could hold closed session to discuss a negotiation strategy. But that can be done. The final approver will have to come to the Board. So, that's what that means. I understand what Mr. Schorch is trying to say, to clarify the language. That can certainly be clarified. With that, I think I personally thought I supported this language because I thought this was a good way to at least take things out of a committee and put to the full Board for the full Board's consideration. I can support this. You know, in light of what was proposed to us from McLean, that limiting to five years. I know there's an escape clause right there that can be... You know, that can be... You know, Sport can change that term to longer than five years because I believe that that's a proposal of ten years, ten years, not five years. But so, you know, Board would have to give a specific approver for 10 years at the Board table. But this is something I feel at this point in time comfortable and supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Palchek?
Sure, briefly, yes. I think agreeing with, I think, the way the Chair explained where we are and looking at the overall process and what Mr. Moon said, this was kind of, as you can see, finalized last week. And so, I think hasn't been, you know, nitpicky, looked at every word yet. So, I think we're happy to take input onto the wording. I think the way we spoke about it in our committee is that we're looking at, does this shift in the way we want to address the naming rights policy overall make sense for the Board? Or be overall, is this direction, first of all, something we support? And I was one of the three members who did support the shift. I think we heard from staff as well as from Ms. Murphy and Mr. Grant. So, I don't know if Mr. Perez or Mr. Kern want to add anything. But really, kind of taking to account, A, that there is concern about negotiations happening at the school level. So, I definitely approve and support the negotiation happening at the Division level. And it was brought up that it could be a similar process to the way the proffers already happened so that in a time of limited funds and not being able to create a new position to take this on and run with it, that we look at what is working for us in such a large system. I know the park system has hired someone. That's not necessarily what we're looking at right now. We're looking at this policy. And finally, that we do allow for the school board to have the final say, but that really the negotiations and those specific decisions be made at the Division level. In addition, I think the survey we received back from very few of our Business Committee members showed some interest in placement of schools within the county and other considerations. So, I think when we look at both access, you know, the equity, but also being able to, I guess, optimize on the school division side, how much we're able to actually bring in from this process, I think we want to give some flexibility to staff to be able to look at that, to maximize it so that it does go into this fund that's specific, which I think was very important to our school representatives, to make sure that it's not just going into a large operating fund, but that it's going to specific use. And we did hear, I think, from Mr. Perez and others, that over the years, the way we've balanced the budget has meant that more and more maintenance has gone to schools. And so, this would be an attempt to try to take back a little bit of that cost and that burden in schools and to try to do it in a manner that both maximizes the possibility of income and looks at maybe a list and equity of where the most need is across the county. So, hopefully, that kind of captures where this is going and how we came to where we are.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Right now, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders on... Up next. I did want to add to Ms. Schultz's question earlier while people are talking. Let me see if I can find it, although I think we posted... Ms. Mulberg, maybe you can find your emails. But at Thursday's Governance Meeting, I sent... It's a Fort Washington school district in Wisconsin. Or it's in Wisconsin. Anyway, it's this small school district, but they have a sponsorships sports guide. And it's kind of what Ms. Schultz is talking about. It literally gives a menu of, here's the school board policy on naming rights and corporate sponsorship. If you want to buy this, this is how much it costs. And so, it's a... It's an incredible comprehensive guide. And what we thought about is that's where the regulation is, as Ms. Palchek talked about. And, you know, certainly, the Board can direct the Governance Committee to say, "Hey, one staff develops its regulations related to this. Can you just run it through Governance so they take a look at it?" But we really did feel that this policy would help capture what we saw some best practice at other school divisions. So, I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Huff.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on this. I appreciated the research that was done to look at best practices elsewhere. And especially, the Wisconsin guide is very similar to some of the initial work that was done in Loudoun, where they established price points and timeframes. And this approach is consistent with what the county is doing on the park side. So, I do support it. However, I am concerned about how we ensure equity in the use of the fund because all of these schools, all of the property was purchased by bond money, which was paid for by all of the taxpayers in Fairfax County. So, all of the taxpayers in Fairfax County have a shared equity interest in it and a shared... Should have a shared opportunity to take advantage of funds when we brand our various fields or auditoriums and things like that. So, I do like the idea of having a fund. I would suggest that as we move forward with the regulation on this, that we have clear language on the transparency of the fund to show that when there are dispersments from the fund, they're done in an equitable manner so that we don't have, "Well, this school had to take out a loan to buy a scoreboard, and this school is given 100% of the cost of a higher-value scoreboard." And so, we need to ensure that we're doing this in an equitable manner because many schools have come to this system in the past with naming opportunities. I know of two at least that then were told no. And so, they took out loans and other things. And so, we want to make sure that we do this, the dispersments of this fund in a equitable and transparent manner. And in the same way we publish how we use money elsewhere, we should be publishing how money is dispersed out of the fund.
Before I call on Ms. Strauss, I do want to share something. The Governance Committee spent a whole two hours hearing from Kevin Snead, who did a great job cataloging how the scoreboards have been paid for at our 25 high schools. And what we saw was many of them got paid for during bond renovations. One of the schools, they got a direct donation from somebody in their community, and it was just paid outright. But at the high level, what we discovered was, it's just like our turf fields. Some schools took out loans, some schools got them paid through other means. There's no way going forward that we can sit here and say, "It's always going to be 100%. How did this one get paid? How did that one get paid?" What high level we cared about with this facility fund is that the Board's going to determine the dispersment. And if we think the need is there, and in the case of McLean, they have the oldest scoreboards in the entire county, and they are no longer able to be repaired. So, it's got to get done somewhere or the other. And so, that's a way that the Board could technically, through this policy, look at the contract and say, based on what we've provided to our other schools through county funds, this would be the comparable specs on what we provide. And then, that's still equity, but it's got to get paid for one way or the other. And if we do it through a corporate contract, that's still fair.
Just transparent.
Yep. It's got to be done. Ms. Strauss, it's your turn. And then, I see... Ms. Evans, I'll add you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Committee and Ms. McLaughlin for your hard work on this. I think this language is appropriate. I, you know, I think we need to go forward and see where we... If we can, in fact, attract more corporate sponsors. And I know that there's been a lot of hard thinking by our schools, by Mr. Kern, by Mr. Foster, by the members of the Committee. And I do think that this language is appropriate. And I think it's ready to go forward and see, you know, see where we can get to help our schools. Again, just to remind everybody, anything that is actually purchased and used within our schools becomes the property of the school board. Elementary schools that, you know, do the running tracks, playground equipment, any of those things. It becomes in part of... Part of the negotiation now, the turf fields, the school division negotiates the contracts. It's not the PTA, it's not somebody else. And part of... Part of the upfront agreement always is that whatever the need for the school, whatever is purchased or what have you, that has to fit the specifications of the school and for a whole variety of reasons, safety, maintenance, what have you. But it belongs to the school then. And therefore, the contract is important, that it is a legal document. And in the case of McLean, and I think it's appropriate for our finance people, is that there has to be an indication that enough money is there to actually cover it. This isn't something where the school board should take on a debt under these circumstances. So, all... For all of those reasons, I think this language is very appropriate. And what is, of course, unusual in the McLean situation is that they have a specific need, and that's actually what determined the dollar amount. But I think maybe you've come up with a solution that we can go forward with. I see McLean fitting into this and going forward for other schools and other needs. Certainly, if there was a list of what something would cost, one of the challenges is that often, schools' needs are to purchase a certain thing. And the purchase price, because, you know, again, when a school goes out and is looking for help to collect money, very often, it is for a specific need that has a specific dollar amount. And that dollar amount may be constant for six months, 12 months. So, while I know the Park Authority does a naming right based on the general collection of dollars, schools often go out and they need to purchase something. They need to fix something. So, that would be the one question I would have if we wanted to place a certain dollar value. Sometimes, schools will say, "Well..." Sometimes, schools will say, well, we need to do X, Y, or Z, and this is the cost. So we would have to work, you know, I have no difficulty working through that, fine, but just to remind my colleagues, the cost of a certain purchase is not constant. But at any rate, thank you very much. I appreciate your leadership and your hard work on this, Ms. McLaughlin. And I'm hoping to go forward, and that we can, in fact, on McLean's part, take advantage of the various, the very generous contribution of this amount of money. We also have a regulation that says we will maintain our athletic equipment, so we are kind of between a rock and a hard place. We either get this fixed through a generous contribution, or we have to go back to a bank account that is very slim on our side. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So before I call on Ms. Huff, I do want to just provide a very high-level, important point of clarification. For 15 months, we've talked about this, and everyone needs to understand, at least, where the governance committee is coming from. This is a contract based on a naming right opportunity. It's an advertising opportunity. It's not that FH Fer is being generous. FH Fer wants to buy naming right access in one of our schools. And why there's the caveat there is, the school system, just like when we sell access for cell tower monopoles, that's priced, it was competitive in the market. And so even if it turns out one school only needs $125,000 in some infrastructure item, we'd still be selling that naming right at that field for either $250,000 over 10 years, or whatever we determine the market value is on an annual basis. And that will shift what FCPS advertise and sells it for. But FH Fer, if, you know, any company like that, they're not being generous. They've determined that it's worth their investment of dollars to advertise in one of our schools. And I welcome as many corporations in the county that want to do that, but I don't want anything lost on the public. We are selling access to advertisement. So I have Ms. Huff, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you, and thank you to the governance committee for their work on this. So at the highest level, the thing that gives me the most angst about this is the position it's going to put each board member, specifically each district board member, in with this fund. And I'm going to go back to work sessions I watched before I was on the board, over the CIP and the order in which schools would get renovated, and me listening to Ms. Evans' work session after work session, advocating for Falls Church, and as much as this board cares about equity, no district board member was going to change where their school was on that list. And so I hear this conversation about caring about equity, but when it comes down to it, every district board member is meant to advocate for their school. And every community member that comes really feels that need for their school. So I have great concern on the kind of, the optimism over the fund and how it gets dispersed among people who are trying to do the best for each of their schools. I also wonder where that's going to put the businesses, especially as I've heard a little bit of a contradiction. I've heard that the contract will be allocated to the fund for the board to decide, but then I also remember hearing you say that they can put something in the contract that says specifically if they want it to be done differently, which then puts the burden on the superintendent and division to decide if they're going to negotiate a contract that way, knowing it's going to come to the board whose policy states it will go to a fund. So those are some of my higher-level concerns. And then into the details, do we decide it, or has the division discussed if there's going to be a cost of negotiating this new kind of naming rights idea and policy? And if so, will those costs be spent from the fund itself? If, let's say, it takes another half an FTE, or that doesn't make sense, another, you know, another employee or half an employee? That's just a question to consider, probably can't be answered right now. And then another detail of the details is, in the policy, we talk about not overly commercializing. I have concern about really subjective wording such as that, because, so we're okay with commercializing, but not overly commercializing. What do we really mean when we say that? What is our policy on that? So I think that is it. Well, and then I'm also hearing a lot of conversation about this policy in specifics to McLean. So I don't know if this is a closed-session conversation, because there maybe is a specific contract, but is that something that then the division gets resubmitted? Is there a renegotiation? Because now, we're talking about there is a value potentially thrown out there, but that might not be the value that Division and Jeff Plattenberg and company decide upon. So those are some high-level questions. I don't necessarily expect anyone to have answers to those today, but I did want to vocalize those. But if anyone has any answers to those questions, that's good, too.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. I think you've raised an excellent question in terms of what we do about determining the value of the naming right, given that one has been presented to the division to date. And that value, as we understood it, was driven by a neighboring jurisdiction that entered into a similar contract. So yes, we could say, well, we want to do our own market analysis, but the school division might also ask itself, bird in the hand, two in the bush. Do you want to go ahead, and this is what we can deem the market value is for now? And then, you know, you've got to always start somewhere. I think that's part of one of the things we've recognized. And then going forward, we will continue to refine, as a division, this capital opportunity for selling naming rights. And at this point, I'll do my own go-back later. So I have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines, and then I have Ms. Palczek and Ms. Schultz for go-backs.
Thank you. I do want to also thank the governance committee. I know this turned out to be more complex than you realized going into it, that it had a lot of different pieces to it. So I see we're going, this goes in a really completely different direction than the original idea. So I did have some of the same questions about, once we have the money, let's forget for a minute how the money gets in there, but once it's in the fund, who are we thinking would do the first cut of the dispersment? Would this be the superintendent and facilities staff that would? Is that what you're envisioning? Is that what the governance is envisioning, that they would look at the various needs and say, these are our top needs, and this is how we propose it? Would it come to the school board monthly, quarterly, on an as-needed basis? Have you gotten into that level of detail? I'm trying to envision how this is going to actually play out in reality, sort of along the lines of what Mrs. Huff was raising.
So I invite Ms. Palczek and Mr. Moon to add on to what I was going to, first take a stab at what you've asked. So in that second sentence, where it says dispersment, and these funds will be approved by the school board, what we were envisioning is that the division superintendent really benefits from the macro-level perspective of not only looking at this contract opportunity at this particular school with the corporation that's come forward. If the corporation says, we really want to earmark it for this specific school, for this specific need, the division superintendent can look in that and say, and let's take McLean, for example, absolutely, we would welcome that, because that's a 30-year-old school, those are 30-year-old scoreboards, they've got to be replaced, we need the quarter of a million dollars to do it anyway. So that's warranted. Let's say instead, the company comes forward, and it's School B. School B's, you know, scoreboard's five years old, perfectly functioning, brings in plenty of annual revenue, but they just want the next greatest, you know, Maserati of scoreboards. The division superintendent could turn to the corporation and say, you can write up that contract, but I can't support it, because it's not where our need is. When I've got 20 other, 25 high schools here with need, that's not a priority. So either rewrite it, or you can just leave it blank, and it goes into the facility fund, they'll make the recommendation for us.
Okay, so we would, oh. Sorry, if I could add to that, I think what came to light also here in Kevin Snead's speak is that, you know, facilities also has a list, knowing where proffer funds are going. So if we look at this, right, it's kind of starting to braid our facilities funding, is they will be able to say, well, this school's about to get this proffer, which will be able to cover some of these facilities' needs, but we really could use the funding over here. So I think that's where, for me at least, it became very apparent that, A, we would like, you know, as they can for staff, if this is approved, to start to come up with an idea of what the regulations and how it would function. Keeping in mind, it's not, you know, one size fits all, and we are not any other district. We have, you know, our specific laws and proffers and facilities' needs.
Yeah, I think that answers my question, that in essence, we would be relying on the superintendent and facilities staff to guide us into the top needs. And as far as when and how we would get it, that will be subject to regs. So I do think that answers it. As far as, I do think McLean may be a different animal than what we see in the future. One of the things that we probably need to be thinking about, back to the question about market value, is if we see an opportunity for naming rights, we could put that out to bid. And so that would, in essence, dictate what market value is if we did that. And again, I think McLean may be different than that in the future. So I raised that, because I think ultimately, that may be where we need to go. That's what, you know, we did have a proposal brought to us, based on some things that were done in Winchester, and I think that's what they did. They went out there and said, here are opportunities for naming rights, you know, who is willing to pay the most for it? And then I think, oh, lastly, just one, I think relatively small thing, but in the new heading, where it used to just say guidelines, and it now says guidelines for new school facilities, I think we need to take out the word "new" there, because that section also refers to current facilities that are renamed or repurposed, and are repurposed. So I would recommend taking the word "new" out of that headline. And I think that, oh, and one last question, I will propose that, and hopefully, everyone can agree to that. So for McLean, we need to figure, is that going to be a separate conversation, Ms. McLaughlin, the McLean, how we're going to move forward on that?
Yes, it was unanimous among the governance committee members at our meeting, two prior meetings, that we wanted to really allow the board to approve of its policy first, and then that we would, we could make a recommendation to the school board to then vote on that contract. We were very mindful of the calendar, and I will just let everyone know, tentatively, what we were hoping for is that this new policy would be posted as new business. Adam Clark, I think it was going to be, this draft policy would be posted for new business this coming Thursday. We voted on, sorry, next Thursday. Mari, I'm already thinking we're voting on the budget on Thursday. Yes, May 25.
So action in June, June, and then would we?
And then, but what we would say is, so the McLean contract would follow by a week, the two weeks later in cycle.
Would you anticipate we would post McLean?
So action item would be, the date in June where it's an action item for this policy would be new business for McLean.
New business for McLean, and then action the next. Okay, that's what I wanted to.
All within the June 30th.
That's what I wanted to find out. Okay, great.
We have a deadline of June 23.
Ms. Strauss, it's my understanding from their letter, that they said they wanted a decision by the end of the school year, and so our academic calendar year or fiscal year stops June 30th, so we can go to FH Fer and ask them. But we've got to work on our business meetings.
Yeah, I need to make sure that we hit the deadline. We don't want to miss this.
So another possibility, just, I'll raise this, and, you know, whatever the board wants to do, we'll do, but since we're going to be scheduling this, we could potentially do it in parallel tracks. We could do McLean, new business, on May 26, then action item on June, I think it's 8th, 8th, 6th, whatever that first June date is. Or the other thing I wanted to ask was, if we did post McLean earlier as new business, now it's changed since then, but if the board chose to do it and was in agreement, we could go straight to action. So I raised that with you and the governance committee, just for scheduling, to make sure that we get in under the deadline.
You're correct, Ms. Evans, from my understanding, that because it already came to the board once, and we postponed on it, it doesn't have to go to new business again, it can just come up for an action item. I am looking at the calendar, June 22 would be our Thursday business meeting, that would fall within the deadline. But the reason why, Ms. Evans, I don't want them the same night, is because I really think that clouds the dialogue and the decision. Plus, I also think it's going to be important for the superintendent and the division to be able to go to FH Fer when we're passing this policy, or if it's up for new business, and they can even bring it then and say, this is the direction of the board. That contract, they're going to want to understand that we've passed a policy that has this facilities fund, and part of how this board will vote and approve on the McLean fund is how that contract's worded. And to Ms. Huff's earlier point, we will probably want a closed session with Division Council, looking at the terms and conditions of FH Fer contracts, so.
Well, then unless I hear differently, I'll schedule, assuming we resolve this tonight, I'll schedule this for new business, May 26, action June 8, and then McLean, new business, June 8, and action June 22, unless I hear differently.
You can, I just don't know if we need it to be new business at all, if it can just be listed as an action item.
Well, you might as well. I mean, if we're, we might as well have it out there to the public, assuming it's ready.
So in fairness to Ms. Hines, she's up next, so if she wants to defer to your question, then I'm leaving it to her. Okay.
Talking about the division being responsible for negotiating these contracts, and we've got a contract that was negotiated at the local level, and may, pardon me? And so I guess my question is, is there an intent to go back to those contracts and renegotiate parts of them before they're presented for new business in June? Or are you intending to present the, yeah, based on this, yeah. So what's the plan with those contracts? Because I'm a little confused at this point, if we're just approving what's already been negotiated, or are you going back and revisiting them in light of this?
Right, so, you know, with any change or amendment to policy, we would sit down and, you know, confirm whether we needed to go back and possibly amend or revise a draft agreement or not. You know, I think that the agreement was general enough that, you know, and again, we'll sit down this week and determine whether we actually need to renegotiate or go back, but my immediate reaction is, I'm having a hard time identifying specific provisions of that agreement, that even with these policy changes would warrant or require a renegotiation or amendment. But again, I need to sit down, based on this board's feedback this evening, to the draft policy and make that final call.
I think we probably need to go into closed session on it. There is one aspect in particular that I just think, from a community optics point of view, we want to make sure that that's addressed.
And if I could just suggest, Ms. Evans, as chair, it might be that at the conclusion of this governance work session, we might determine that Thursday, when the board has a budget work session, that we might want to include a closed session to speed things along, rather than wait till Thursday, 25th. But, so, I mean.
I'm fine with doing that, if the board wants to do that.
I, the reason why, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I wouldn't recommend closed session today right now, is because of the posting issue. I really want you guys to go digest this, look through it, and I don't think we would do as well in a closed session. So I'd like to give it a little bit of time. People might even want to reach out to Mr. Foster and say, here's some questions I have for closed session. here's some questions I have for closed session.
So, so are you suggesting after our budget work session on, uh, Thursday night, I have it closed on?
That, that's one option. Otherwise, we would be waiting till Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
And that's, since that's our budget night, I, I mean, if, if the board agrees we need a closed session, probably doing it at the end of that, that period would, would, would work.
The, well, we would have closed sessions, we usually go in at five. I don't know how many student cases we have, but.
Are you taking that on the twenty-sixth?
I'm talking about the twenty-sixth. If you're thinking we, we can go ahead and do it this Thursday, the eighteenth, that's for you guys to decide.
I can, I can schedule it whenever the board wants to do it.
All right, well, how about everybody think about it right now? I want to get through, Ms. Hines hasn't had a moment to speak, and then I have go-backs with Ms. Palchuk and Ms. Schultz. And, uh, and then we'll wrap, try to take a pulse of where we are.
Um, thank you. Maybe, Mr. Foster, you could help me. It looks to me like what we're trying to do, um, is to decouple, at least for purposes of board approval, the naming rights from the allocation of the funds. Is that right? Because it looks like we vote separately on those things, according to this policy. Is that right?
Right, I mean, the, the policy is currently revised simply, as Ms. McLaughlin outlined, talks about a facilities fund that the monies would then, would go into, um, from any naming rights agreement. And then it would be determined by the superintendent and his staff in consultation with the board or the board member from that division, where the money is going to be spent and applied.
Okay, so then.
Sorry, real quick.
Right.
No, what it's saying is, the dispersment of funds out of there are by the authority of the board. So consultation might be the district board member and the superintendent making a recommendation, but we, the board, makes the decision about the dispersment of funds.
Gotcha. So I, I guess, I'm just trying to make sure I understand in, in real life how this happens, right? Because I assume that you have people coming wanting naming rights who, um, they may want to just say, I want to put my name on this particular school, and I'm willing to put all that money into a pot, and I don't care where it goes. We may have people like that. But we may also have people who want to put their name on something, and, um, they want that money to go to that place, right? So, um, at what point does that kind of work itself out in the negotiations? Like, does, does the, um, the potential, um, naming rights company, um, do they, I guess they would decide either they're going to do it or not depending on some kind of assurance they get about where the money's going to go?
Yeah, it would have to depend on each negotiation, um, you know, how that would, would, would play out.
So, Ms. Hines. So they could have, I just want to know, so they could have in this contract, because we're going to, they could have in the naming rights contract specificity about where the money's going, that it would be done at, at that point. So we're not, we may not be decoupling the money and the naming rights. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
So I think it was captured. It was captured earlier in a really good scenario that, um, a corporation could come for school A. Say we, we want to do this, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we all going to stay at school A. The division superintendent, in consultation with Mr. Plattenberg, looks at school A and says, what facility needs do they have? Is they, do they have turf replacement, repair? Do they need new scoreboard? If there's no facility need there, the superintendent may say, look, we're a school division with a lot of facility needs. This is a facility fund. You're designating school A, but school A just got renovated. They are flush with money, they got proffers. So are, do you want naming rights? You can put it at this school because you want it at this field, Robinson, let's say. But, you know, we've got other division needs. And, and that's where the, the superintendent, who knows where the greatest facility need is throughout the county, has that dialogue.
Okay, so this, so my question, and thank you, I think that does clarify. It's kind of like, so before the naming rights contract comes to the board to be approved, the board will know where the name is going and where the money's going, right? But then at some later date, we do probably sort of the pro forma approval of the spending of the money. Is that kind of the idea?
Right, or in the event that you have, like you gave, the first scenario, a corporation, Capital One, says, we want to buy five scoreboards. We don't care what school it's at. Put it into the fund, and you guys spend it at wherever your needs are greatest. And then that, again, the division superintendent can make recommendations and say, those five schools just got renovated. They don't need the money, but we're recommending it to go to these projects elsewhere throughout the division.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm following up a little bit on Ms. Huff's point, which is that as district members, we'll be looking out for our own schools, right? So I, I just, and again, the devil's probably in the details, which would come in the regulation. But, um, it sounds like at the very least, before we vote on anything, the board will know where the money's going and where the names are going. So, okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm now to go-backs. Uh, I have Ms. Palchuk followed by Ms. Schultz. Oh, you're okay right now? Schultz, you're up.
Okay. I don't know if it's like everything old is new again, but I feel like we've just come full circle. Because Ms. Strauss started off by saying that any funds that come in have to cover the costs so that the school division isn't left, you know, with debt, that it didn't plan on or negotiate. That it isn't either covered by capital, as you said. Some things have been covered by capital needs, some things have been covered by operational needs. And then now we're talking about splitting contracts and putting it into a fund and reallocation of monies. And that's why I'm back to, look, what is the cost? How much does it cost to replace a scoreboard? How much does it cost to put up a sign on a building? And I sent everybody pictures of this, you know, schools out in Loudoun. I went out and traveled to go see those. How much does that cost to put up? Because that's selling a naming right, whereas a new scoreboard is, I mean, there's funds that are an outgoing that are associated with that. That's just not incoming. And if we're not into discussing what a split is upfront, like, okay, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there, sixty, forty. You know, the school gets sixty, and whatever fund is gets forty, and it covers Ms. Corbett Sanders' concern that, okay, well, maybe what happens if a school can't sell its naming rights? Well, that's what the forty goes to, and at least it's, you know, it's better than a poke in the eye with a sharp stick as an old blossom line, you say. So, uh, you know, you can complain that they didn't get a new scoreboard because somebody didn't want to name their scoreboard. But if the other one hadn't gotten theirs, then you wouldn't get the forty percent at all. I, I'm just saying, but you can't have it both ways. You can't say that any contract has to cover all costs and that it's just going to go into some fund somewhere. And, and that's why I'm saying we've come full circle. How can we vote on McLean if we haven't even figured out the basics of, is it going into a pot? Is it being split? Is it going to the school to cover all costs and whatever's left over goes into the fund? I mean, it's like, we haven't even, we haven't even sort of grappled with, what is the very basic thing? The thing is, if you're selling a, a right to name something, and there's a cost associated, then you cover all those costs and whatever is left over goes into a fund?
No, Ms. Schultz, let me see if I can provide some clarity here. We're not entertaining, so to speak, the McLean contract offer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because it's about buying the scoreboard. It's, do we think that's the market value for getting a naming right purchased in Fairfax County?
That's not the que, no, that's not the question I'm asking.
Okay.
I'm asking, how much does a scoreboard cost?
Okay, we actually had Mr. Sneed and Mr. Plattenberg provide us with some cost estimates.
Does it cost less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It's a little bit, and we did talk.
A little bit more or a little bit less?
Okay, I'm going to see if I can go about this as a way. It doesn't matter. We're setting policy based on saying.
It does ma, no, no, I'm so, no, I'm sorry. The question I'm asking is, are we collecting funds from vendors that cover the cost of an installation of equipment? And if we're not going to cover those costs, then you're talking about saddling the division with debt.
No, well, first of all, there won't be debt. But Ms. Schultz, keep in mind, this just happens to be a scoreboard. The next time around, when they bring two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the table, we put it into the facilities fund, and guess what? Mr. Plattenberg now has money toward the turf replacement. You keep thinking that we're selling this for the scoreboard, and it's not. We're selling this because it has a dollar value. It's an asset. Selling the name has an asset. It just happens to be that this is the scoreboard.
Uh, I, I agree. And I'm, what I'm saying is, there's two, there's two different buckets of naming rights. Sticking, uh, brass letters on the side of a, you know, a, a ticket gate that says it's such and such stadium, that doesn't cost anything other than the sign itself, and you literally are selling naming rights. If you were talking about quote unquote, buying a new scoreboard, and that a company says, hey, listen, I'm going to, uh, help you fund your new scoreboard, and as a result, I want to, I want naming rights on the scoreboard or on the field or whatever as a result, now you're talking about there is a, a, an inherent cost associated with acquiring that equipment that if the naming rights set, um, contract doesn't cover those costs, well, who is? And that's why I'm saying, why isn't there a menu? And if a, if a scoreboard costs the system such and such amount of money, then whatever the naming rights are that get sold need to cover that cost because as Ms. Strauss said ten minutes ago, any funds must cover the costs.
Ms. Schultz, another way to look at this is, you have lovely West Springfield. And Ms. Evans has lovely TJ, who just have gotten brand new, um, or renovated fields. There, so they've gotten, hold on, no, no, hold on, hold on.
We're segueing the conversation away from the question. I would like the question that I asked answered.
That scoreboard has got to be replaced. The division has to replace a scoreboard that can no longer be repaired. It's going to get replaced and repaired or replaced no matter what. If we didn't have an FH Fur on the table at all, didn't even exist. Mr. Plattenberg would have to be working with McLean to figure out, how are we going to get you guys a new scoreboard? Because yours is the oldest in the county, it's over thirty years old.
I am not the one who said that any cost, any funds need to cover the costs. Ms. Strauss's.
I, well, you know what?
And so, so either we have the take as a board in a policy that you're talking about passing that costs need to be covered by funds incoming, or we don't. And we say, we're going to own the cost of all installations of any equipment anywhere in the system, period. And, oh, by the way, did afray those costs? We're just going to sell names of stuff, and whatever we can get, we can get.
So.
But there are two entirely different approaches to, uh, a, a naming right. One is the installation of something and putting a name on, uh, on it as a result of a company saying, I'll name that thing. At which case, I agree with Ms. Strauss that any funds coming in need to cover the costs. The other is, you know, scoreboards are fundamentally the obligation of the school system, at which point, you're going to get every booster, uh, club that has, that has ponied up the money in the past to pay for it, coming back to the school system to say, well, if you're saying from this point forward that it's the inherent obligation of the school system to cover things, our, our, our booster club is out, whatever, a hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty grand, let's, let's see remuneration to our booster club because we covered the cost of it.
And Ms. Schultz, that didn't happen with synthetic turf fields, and you and I both know that. So Robinson, Lake Braddock, Woodson, and many other schools had to take out loans, buy the booster clubs. They're not lined up telling us, hey, you helped pay for those five other schools out there. Show me the money. It just happened, that's how they got financed. What we're paying for, whether it's McLean, whether it's TJ whose field gets named next, whether it's Robinson, we pay for the lettering that goes on whatever scoreboard they've got. In the case of McLean, we're saying, if you want to bring us a two hundred and fifty dollar, thousand dollar contract to put your name up at that school, great. And, oh, by the way, when you give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're looking to earmark it for that school because we believe they've got a facilities need. And then the superintendent says, I agree.
How does that answer Ms. Corbett Sanders' question?
Which, which question are you talking about?
What, what happens if the next person that comes along says, I want to donate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I want to, um, uh, earmark it for bathrooms at Robinson because South County has bathrooms and X, Y, and Z has bathrooms. So I want it to go to bathrooms. And, um, Ms. Evans says, oh, no, 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 I want it for Falls Church. And Ms. Corbett Sanders says, oh, no, 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 I want it for West Potomac, and so on. And that gets to Ms. House's point.
Ms. Schultz, what we talked about is, if the corporation comes forward and says, I specifically want to earmark it for this school, and this is where we would like to earmark it because they have this facility need, Dr. Lockhart, Mr. Plattenberg, they're looking at that contract proposal and saying, that's not going to fly with our, our school board because that's not considered need. Or they may say, you know what, we agree with you. We need to get bathrooms in our stadiums, and we don't have enough money to do it. So you know what? We think the board can get behind the fact that you want to put your name on.
This does not say that.
It ta, if you want to make a suggestion from more detailed policy language that says, how we'll figure out the nuts and bolts of, of approving the dispersment of funds, I welcome it. I absolutely welcome it. This was our first attempt to try and find, how do you want it case by case basis, take in an opportunity to sell naming right as a school division? So, uh, at this point, um, Ms. That, that's, I mean, at this point, I don't have anybody on deck. So if you want to be the next person, Ms. Huff, you're welcome to be.
I, maybe I want to ask if this is what Ms. Schultz is saying. Because, so if, let's say a company comes forward and says, I want my name on the scoreboard at McLean. And then we say, okay, it's going to be on that scoreboard. It's thirty years old, or whatever scoreboard that's there. And they say, no, I only want it if it's going to be on a new scoreboard. What we're getting into is naming rights on something that's existing or naming rights on, they see a need and they want a bathroom in a certain school or scoreboard.
No corporation can demand an enterprise like Fairfax County Schools do whatever it wants to do. We would just tell them, we're not replacing a ten-year-old scoreboard.
It's not, it's not a demand, it's a contingency of, of wanting their name. We can turn it down, but then, at that point, we then again are putting your, our, us against each other and against community members on what, that. I, I, I announced that as my initial concern, and I stand by it. I didn't, I didn't know if that's exactly what you were saying, but I did see a piece of that.
Madam Chair, uh, we have a policy, and McLean High School issue. Those are maybe related, but also separate issues. And we've been working on policy for many, many months. We just come to, governance committee has come up with, for the full consideration, this draft proposal. Let's see whether there is enough board members who are willing to post this, put this as a new business at the next meeting. And if a board, if there is a majority supporting that, then we, we will scrap that. Either we don't have a policy, we'll send it back to the governance, or come up with something else at this table to post it as a new business. Let's do that rather than, or if there is a majority supporting this as a new business, at least to put that as a new business. Even if you disagree some of the languages, you know, you could, you can, you know, later on come up with an amendment to propose at the, hopefully prior to the board, taking on action so that we can all consider what that is. So that I am trying to, you know, from the governance perspective, I just want to make a, find a way to make some progress and come to a resolution on this issue, whether we're going to have a policy or not. If a policy, what will be the policy? We've been doing this for eighteen months, I think. Okay, I was rounding that up to, uh, eighteen, year and a half. So I just want to see the resolution of this. And, and based upon how this goes, you know, that can also fashion where the McLean issue will also go. Because I also want to see the resolution of McLean issue, whether that goes on or that goes in different direction, right, left, upward, down. I think that should come to resolution too. So, uh, you know, Madam Chair, I, that, that I would like to, I would like to respectfully request that at some point soon, it's just ten minutes after six o'clock, some point soon that you seek the sense of the board and, and make some decisions.
Can you consider the alternate language? I mean, and it's not alternate, it's just, I think slightly.
Absolutely, so Ms. Schultz, would you do me a favor? I've got two people on deck. If you would email the clerk, you emailed the clerk? All right, so would, um, Eileen, would you go ahead and just put the suggested, recommended change from Ms. Schultz, so that is something we can talk about in our next steps? And, and I agree with Mr. Moon. I had two people with go-backs, and then I would like to take a temperature of the board of what we want to do. And we have several options. We're just trying to be as, um, you know.
You know, Madam Chair, you want to check my temperature? It's very high.
I, I, I appreciate that. And I, hopefully you got the one-word change that I had hoped the board could decide about as well, while we're considering Mrs. Schultz, taking out the word new.
Okay, yes, that, that, that's, that's, I think that will be fine. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Palchuk, and then we'll take a, a sense of where the board is right now.
Mr. Moon, thank you. I think you're absolutely right that we need to decouple the policy.
I think you're absolutely right that we need to decouple the policy from the discussion of McLean High School, because it makes for much cleaner policymaking. Um, my suggestion to clear this up would be to have a clear language in the policy that when we talk about the fund being established, that the dispersments from the fund will be done in, um, coordination or in consultation with the school board as a whole, in, and keeping in contact, it's, or keeping in mind our equity resolution, um, because that will then allow us to move forward, look at each individual thing, and on an equity piece, then you say, what are, i- is it an equitable decision to invest in new, um, facilities this way? So, the ed spec has one level of, um, scoreboard that they have supported at all of the schools. If the scoreboard at, um, McLean is different than that, then McLean's organizations would be able to put a little skin in the game themselves, recognizing that they will have the opportunity to realize revenue from the sale of digital ads. But the whole point is, get the policy adopted and then, and make sure the policy addresses the transparency and equitable distribution from the fund, and then let's get on to McLean.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Palczek?
Yeah, just briefly adding to that, um, and the reason I, I do, I'm, I'm glad we decoupled policy from regulation, um, is looking also at the work that, um, J. Grant and Alzis Murphy have done, the Ignite Partnerships. My understanding, he has gone back at this point and created a menu, um, to look at where it was beneficial, where it was not, and so I think that is work, that my assumption is it will take some time, and it's not something we can kind of decide tomorrow, what is the best way to move forward with the types of contracts we might be looking at. Um, also, the foundation level, you know, when people just come, oh, I wanna support this project, it's something that Foundation and Alzis Murphy look at, and they say, well, okay, we appreciate you wanna give support, right now, these are our priorities. Um, and so hopefully you're interested in one of those priorities. If not, they can look at, okay, can we work this out? And if it's not going to be beneficial, you know, we move on and, and make sure that, that the school system, and I appreciate that, is actually benefiting. Um, and finally, my other point of concern, I think is really important, it, my understanding was that the new, the LED scoreboards, and there's only one school that does not have it, um, have a much shorter lifespan than our older, um, scoreboards, so it looks like this is gonna become even more and more critical to be able to find funding. Uh, I believe they had 10 to 12, or 10 to, 10 to 15-year lifespan, um, where it used to be about double that. So, um, it does seem that it's pretty critical, and, um, and as we spoke, let's go ahead and, and try to get started and work through the kinks, and hopefully the regulation can be worked out in the future. But right now, I support this policy while I'm open to some small wording changes.
Thank you. Okay, so one thing I did hear from Ms. Corbett Sanders, um, about the draft language that's before us, is that the second sentence, if we go to Section 5, please? So, Section 5, um, second sentence where it says dispersment of these funds will be approved by the school board. So I think that is where I'm sort of hearing, some board members are saying that needs to be more clearly defined. You know, going from revenues going into this fund, dispersment will be approved by the board, but what happens in between? Um, and I think we could put some structural language in there on what that would look like. Um, and then I would, again, ask, where do we show language Ms. Schultz was recommending?
Can I just say a comment on that, one, the spot you were just on?
Uh, sure.
And, and I don't know if this is something we'd want, but does it make sense to add in or as otherwise specified in the contract? Well, all I'm saying is, it says, it will be allocated to the fund, and what I heard Ms. McGlaughlin say is, there could be a case where a contract states, in an, in a bid for a naming right, that they want a specific amount, or all of it, or whatever their ask is, that if the division agrees to that contract, we as a board could be presented with a contract that doesn't allocate to a facilities fund. So, I just don't see the allowance for what you said, whether we want it or not, I don't know. All I'm saying is, that doesn't say that.
I, I would agree, that language up there is very, very, very high-level, and doesn't provide that degree of detail, and people may find that's gonna be more comfortable. I mean, even where it says in the second sentence, dispersment of these funds will be approved by the school board, you could use the, the verb will be just, just, um, determined by the school board. So, the, it's, again, trying to figure out where the consensus of the board is, and the only thing I can say is, I'm feeling a little bit of vindication of the 15 months we spent on this thing, because, I, I mean, look at this work session, it's not as simple as it looks, trying to figure out where everybody is on this, but I do, I, I would like to at this point, and Ms. Huff, maybe if you can help brainstorm what would go in there, um, and email it to, um, to Ms. Mulberg, so she could put that in, and while you're doing that, we can, um, Ms. Schultz, pull up where you were recommending a change that says, "Contracts for naming rights shall be subject to final approval by the school board." The school board authorizes the division to negotiate the initial terms and conditions of all contracts associated with naming rights, including financial terms, and then, "Contracts for naming rights shall be subject to final approval for the school board." Let me just, uh, ask, does anybody wanna speak to Ms. Schultz's suggested changes? Anybody have any reservations about that? Mr. Foster as well, if you look at it and see if you think there's anything that changes it in a manner that the board needs to think about?
Could we get just a very brief, kind of, what's, what's the difference?
So basically, Ms. Schultz recommends changing oversee to negotiate. She recommends including in the second line, including financial terms, instead of decide the monetary value.
Maybe more than value.
Well, I, I, Ms. Schultz, I will still push back and disagree that somewhere in our policy, we have to make sure it's stated that it's the division that's determining the value of this naming right.
But monetary value is a subset, monetary value is a subset of financial terms, financial terms is bigger, so mon-- monetary value is, is a small financial terms, is, what are the financial terms?
Could you say financial terms including, uh, you say financial, to include financial terms and monetary value?
I, I think financial terms is a greater term, it's, it's more broad--
As long as people understand what that means, then that's fine.
And then, and then the la, and the third sentence is just, um, it's just restated for clarity.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And there's nothing here that substantively changes anything.
Right.
And doesn't address the concern of, we're treating McLean differently than everybody that comes after.
I, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with Mr. Moon, that the, the more we drag each other into the conversation about McLean and this policy, the briar patch will just, you know, be, be, get wider and wider and wider. Everybody can use the McLean contract as a tangible example in your own brain to figure out how that plays out, but I will respectfully disagree with you, Ms. Schultz. We're not setting up two different, um, standards here of McLean and everybody else coming forward, because there are some of us who can say that--
McLean's money's not going into a fund, and McLean's money's not gonna help Ms. Corbett Sanders.
It will go into the fund, and McLean's need, McLean's need, as determined by Mr. Plattenberg and the division superintendent may be, you know what? We need about $200,000 out of that fund to pay for scoreboards because they've gotta be replaced. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans?
So just on the language there, "Contracts for naming rights shall be subject to final approval," is, does that suggest we won't necessarily approve it?
Correct.
So you're saying that, that we--
We could, we could vote it down.
Under what circumstances would, I, I'm, I think the other is clearer, that, you know, we, we'll approve them, you know, period, as opposed to will be subject to final approval. That suggests some--
We're just gonna approve them, then why approve them at all?
Ms. Evans, that is, that is actually the, what the governance committee intended, that the division superintendent, we're giving them the authority to negotiate, but then they bring the final terms to us, and from an equity lens, as Ms. Corbett Sanders pointed out, they could bring us the contract, and we would look at it and say, this isn't addressing equity because school A is gonna get $250,000 earmarked to them, and they have no facility need, they're just rolling in proffer money and--
But, I know, I understand that, but my, 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 my question here is, doesn't this say we won't necessarily approve them? This says they'll be subject to final approval, it, it doesn't say that the board will approve them.
Subject to final approval means that it can't, that contract can't be approved without us. The board must approve the final contract, or it's not valid.
Okay, then why not just say, "Contracts for naming rights shall be appro, shall, shall require final approval by the school board?" I, I think, "shall be subject to" sounds squishy.
That's, that's, that's legal language, but--
Is it?
Yeah, that's what I'm--
Contracts for naming rights shall, shall, why not just say, "shall require final approval"?
Ms. Schultz, are you okay with that clarity? "Shall require final approval," said "subject to"?
I, I don't either, which is why I wanted to change it.
If we're not, if we're just gonna simply approve them, then why bring it to us at all? I'm not gonna be a rubber stamp, and I'm not gonna agree to be a rubber stamp.
Right, but this doesn't, this doesn't say you will approve it, it says that they will require final approval by the board.
Yeah, Madam Chair, real chair, that, I read contracts every day.
Yes.
I'm sure that Mrs. Schultz had read many contracts herself, and "shall be subject to final approval" is a perfectly fine legal language.
But it says that each and every one of them will require final approval of the board.
Yes.
With that understanding, I'm fine with it, that it, to my mind, it, it says that they might not come before the board, but as long as, as that's legal language, that says they will all come before the board, then I'm fine with it.
Okay. So, can I, 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 I'm gonna try small and go big. So, real quick, Ms. Schultz took recommended language from governance, she edited it, these two sections here. Can I see a show of hands if people accept the edited changes, um, as submitted by Ms. Schultz? Okay, we're there, perfect. Okay, now, if we can go up to the top, Ms. Huff, did you send any, or do you, you feel like, did you think about it? Okay. So, so another, so, at this point, um, Ms. Evans asked if we would just correct Section 4, where she was saying that it doesn't always pertain, Section 4 doesn't pertain solely to new school facilities, it's just guidelines for school facilities. Mr. Foster, do you think that edit there is fine based on what's captured in Section 4? That we take out "new" because there is reference where it might not be a new school?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I didn't read that section. Okay. All right, so, show of hands of support for Ms. Evans, edit there? Just taking out "new." Okay. So, to the top of Section 5, this is the crux of the language here. All right, so, we know that Ms. Huff did a very good job, and others as well, pointing out that somewhere between Sentence 1 and Sentence 2 of that governance language needs some greater clarity. But trying to figure out what that will be, will, um, tonight is gonna be difficult. I would like to humbly suggest that we, as a board, give guidance to the chair, Ms. Evans, that we would like to post this as new business, knowing that board members then have two weeks to go ahead and revise, improve upon, or in the end, decide, this isn't what we want, and you can go anywhere from request to pull it, to, you know, major surgery to it. But I, I, I do think at this point, with, you know, the, the board members here today, can, can we consider pushing, um, supporting this going to new business? So can I see a show of hands who are willing to support it going to new business? Okay, so that's the majority who is here. So, I, I recommend and would welcome, wholeheartedly, if anyone's got recommended language to improve upon this policy, um, happy to talk about it, happy to brainstorm some more on it, but I, I think at least we need to move forward, and in the end, we still have to get the majority of the board to decide after digesting this. So, at this point, um, I believe this governance section is concluded.
So I would, uh, suggest that, that people really get that amendment in just as soon as possible, so everybody can look at it. And so with the closed session that, um, people wanted about McLean, are we, um, now thinking that people wanna see that on May 26th? May 26th?
Thank you for reminding me. Do people have a preference of it on Thursday?
I'm sorry, the 20, the 20--
It was either gonna be this Thursday, this Thursday going to closed session.
Okay, so that's, I'm trying to get a sense of the board, whether we want it this Thursday or the, the day that we take the budget up, which I, I'm, I'm corrected, it's May 25th.
Yeah.
Sure. Do you have a preference, Mr. Foster, when you come and talk to us about McLean? Okay. Either way, it would either be before a long evening or after a long evening, so.
I would, I would, I would recommend that we would go from the student leadership thing into closed session and then into budget. I don't think you'd want this thing, the closed session, to go afterwards. It makes Mr. Foster have to stick around, and he may not need to be for the budget dialogue.
I'm available either this Thursday or next Thursday, so whenever the board prefers to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.